Was the lawyer coming back?
No. He submitted an update writing. That was my understanding last year.
Did you know we said it was in order after?
His personal business.
I asked for an update for the board's requirements for the last vote. I believe that he's been writing.
But I think we just find it. Which was that two K back? But he said he could maybe get out of what he had never heard.
I didn't have a personal complaint. Nothing of that, what's an emergency or not, it's not my case.
These two are voting.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. We got it all? Because he was after. Yeah. Yeah.
But I don't know, I was voting in.
Yep. Make sure. I'm up for reelection.
Good evening. Board of Appeals meeting for June 5th, 2025, located at Chelmsford Police Department, 2 Old North Road, Chelmsford. All meetings are televised live and available on demand by Chelmsford Telemedia. Public input, public input shall be limited to statements from the public relating to any issues with the jurisdiction of the Chelmsford Zoning Board of Appeals that are not currently the subject of a pending public hearing before the zoning board of appeals. Public comment on any pending public hearing shall only be heard during such public hearings and may be limited to three minutes' time. Anyone like to speak about an item that is not on the agenda this evening? Seeing none, we're scheduled to have a new public hearing at 6 Brittany Lane that was inadvertently advertised in the newspaper as 8 Brittany Lane, but I think with the amount of people here, we're going to skip over the new public hearing for 6 Brittany Lane and 16 Castlewood. I say we have patience as we try to sort out the larger problem we seem to face tonight. The first item on the agenda is Ledge Road, or the third item on the agenda is Ledge Road, owner Ledge Road Realty Holdings and Newport Aggregates LLC. They are requesting an administrative appeal under the zoning bylaw, section 195, 102B3, of a cease and desist order issued by the building commissioner relative to the use of Ledge Road for commercial vehicles and any other relief deemed necessary. Ledge Road is located in the residential RB zoning district. What we have in front of us now is a request for a continuation. There was apparently a death in the family and what the town, myself and others did was agree to that continuation with the applicant. So it puts us in a bit of a problem legally to not have the applicant here testify when we're having a hearing. We're going to take a vote on that. The board will decide whether to continue it. The decision was made to continue it till June 18th.
Come on.
There has been no decision. This is what will happen when the board votes. We can vote right now on this. I understand that, sir.
This is actually in the streets.
If you could, if you could.
One person for continuing if you have 100 people that have to go home.
I understand your problem. I'm very sympathetic to it.
No, you're not. No, you're not.
We're not going to have people yelling at us all night. That's just not going to work that way, okay? There's a lot of people here. I understand there's a lot of passions. I understand the problem. We have looked at it very carefully. I think what I'm going to do is ask for a motion to continue this and we'll take it from there for where the board votes. There are five voting members tonight. It will be myself, Brian, Charlie Wojcze, Glenn Diggs, Rod, and Peter Cassely. Those will be the five voting members tonight. Could I ask for a motion to continue the public hearing for, I don't know if they have a number on Ledge Road, the Ledge Road cease and desist order?
Brian, Kevin, one question before you do that.
Certainly.
If we vote to continue it, or not continue it, let's say, and we have a discussion, can, is that still leave us the opportunity to continue it later on?
I think, no.
Based on the discussion?
Mr. Chairman, through you, Alex Weiszeit from KP Law. Once you open the public hearing, at that point, you're, in my opinion, you're leaving the town in a bit of a disadvantage if we get into litigation, which is likely to ensue one way or another, because that would give the applicant the opportunity to argue that they weren't given a fair opportunity to present their case at the, at the last hearing. So in the interest of preserving the strongest legal position possible in the litigation, I would recommend agreeing the continuance.
Mr. Attorney, showing up is a choice.
I'm going to ask him not to speak out of turn, sir.
Would you want an opportunity to speak before you vote?
Not if the hearing is not open.
So we can open the hearing, allow, I mean, testimony is a problem and so we're, we're in a bit of a tight bind here and I defer to you again.
Again, it's, it's ultimately the board's decision whether or not to agree to the continuance, but my recommendation is that the board does agree just for the two-week continuance. And that way, the applicant, you won't have to deal with the procedural argument from the applicant that they weren't given a fair opportunity to present their case.
My, my, no, I extended one week.
It's been eight months.
That's.
I, I mean, the, from above, the date came when it was open and available for all parties, including the attorney, the other party, Ledge Road. We're, we're just trying to make it work. I mean, I can assure you that we understand your concerns. We've all received the emails. I've read all of them. If anyone asked me a question and asked for a response, I apologize, my email was bouncing it all back. I don't know why. I'm trying to work on that.
Mr. Chairman, the problem is they're trying not to make it work. That's the problem. This is a delaying tactic. It's a common.
I, I can't say I disagree with you. I will tell you, I can't think of another reason that I would have allowed a continuance other than a funeral. I cannot.
Their lawyer can be here. He made personal plans on somebody at two months.
Sorry, I, I got the letter that was sent about the request for continuance and I didn't feel comfortable with the definite family of the business owners. However, their hired representative, the lawyer, said he could come tonight. He said, let me know if I need to come. I can come to meet. He's our hired representation. He can come represent while we deal with the family. He's probably not just here. He should be here today to represent them and I don't think it's fair that there wasn't agreement that he just come.
And I can understand that you're all here. I mean, this is obviously a very large meeting, so we, we're really sympathetic to that. I don't know, honestly, if it wasn't a funeral, I can't imagine another reason that we would have considered the continuance.
But the hired party that they hired to represent them, they didn't have a funeral. They were all.
I think at the point that letter became part of the project, it was, it was already decided. You know, we had, we had a telephone conference. Yes, ma'am.
He opened this meeting up to the public without it being, you know, a meeting.
This meeting is not opened as of yet. We're going to.
Right. Well, I'm saying you can open it up to the public, so the public can speak.
So now we've had testimony without the Ledge Road being able to respond.
Vote to, to do the continuance, but then after that, when we ask questions of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I do not recommend opening the public hearing because at that point, the board would not have authorization to continue it. Right now, we have authorization to continue to the next meeting without taking testimony, but if we open the public. Sir, please don't interrupt.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, again, I understand there are very fervent positions here and I am very sympathetic to them and I want to represent what's in the town's best interest here. My opinion is that in order to have the strongest case we can going into court, we should continue to the 18th. Everyone who's here should plan to come then and a decision will be made that night and we'll be off to court shortly thereafter.
Does anything else change your justice?
Move it two weeks and then the decision will be made at that point. I anticipate we'll be going to court shortly thereafter.
Brian, I have a question of town council.
At that point, there will not have been.
I think you can ask that.
An agreement or any representations about agreeing to the continuance beforehand, so again, my opinion is that in order to have the strongest case we can going into court, it makes sense to agree to the continuance.
If it's going to court, don't allow the continuance and just send it to court.
The problem, the problem with that is that we're, we're inviting the court to just order a remand at that point because they will argue they were not given a fair opportunity to present their case at the last public hearing.
It's a, it's a position of strength when you go into this. Do you understand that? That's, that's where we are.
Can I, so.
I understand your position. This was not our intent whatsoever. We're just responding to the events as they came in and.
This is, okay, guys, guys, guys.
Intelligent comment coming up.
Okay. All right. I'm going to say something that's very unpopular and, look, I live on Springfield. I really want this resolution for desperately, but I also work in corporate life and I know how these things play out. I would strongly recommend that we listen to legal counsel because we could end up losing ground if we, if there's some type of loophole. We've come this far, guys. Please, let's not put ourselves in a position that we're behind on this. The other thing too, I understand too, delaying tactics, you know, they kick the can down and all of those things happen. Is there a way that we legally can say, look, we're putting a stake in the ground. We've given you adequate amount of time. You need to be here because otherwise there's a challenge legally with that, but I think if we just rush forward because we're so desperate to just get this done, we could be harming ourselves and nobody wants this. We've come so far and we worked so hard. I would trust the judgment of town council.
Well said.
And I would want to be unpopular, but I'm not against it.
Well, and to, and to your point, ma'am, your question about can we represent to them that they need to be at the next meeting and there will not be additional continuance, continuances, the answer to that is yes, and I will make that clear to their council.
Yes, sir.
So what's not to talk about? First, the chief of court, for the delay, on that hearing, will the town people be allowed to speak before the vote? Yes, no?
Yes, you would be able to speak tonight had it been an open hearing. And yes, you'll be able to speak again. I think we're going to talk with where to have it. It's obviously a full house.
And as town council, I would ask that folks who, especially folks who have lived in the area a long time, please do speak and talk about what the changes that you have witnessed since you've lived here at the next meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we hold a special hearing, like off-cycle, on this topic?
We are. We meet once a month and this is June's meeting and we're meeting on the 18th, a special meeting specifically for this. I think there is, is there another matter that's, I think there's another matter, but this would. Sorry, Becky, go ahead.
So the June 18th is a special meeting for the 40B project that we have a plan for. So the 18th, we already know that we got confirmation from the board members that there are enough, we need at least five at the table to vote. So, sorry, the 18th, the reason why we're talking about the 18th instead of waiting until July 10th, a regular monthly meeting, is because we already have another hearing that we squeezed into the month of June due to scheduling conflicts and that's been advertised for June 18th and the board members have said that they would appear. We need at least five board members out of the eight at every meeting to have a forum. So we have a forum for the 18th, so rather than waiting off until the July 10th, we propose to have a meeting on the 18th.
June, June 18th?
June 18th.
Yes.
Great, so that's so fine.
Less than two weeks, so, two weeks. Thank you.
I think it's a safe establishment.
I got one question. If you, for tonight, to delay till 18th, no problem with that, but after that's voted, can I ask questions after that of the board? Just bring me up.
Before the vote on the 18th, you can ask all the questions you want.
But I can't tonight after you close it?
It, it can be a problem because it becomes testimony.
Okay.
And I really am doing this on advice of council. We don't have an agenda ourselves other than to do the best for the town we can. Yes, ma'am.
I just, I want to say I do agree with Christine Prova's, what's her name? Laura, very well said. I do agree with that as much as I wish the vote was not postponed. I would like to say that I don't think it was fair that the lawyer got away with not showing up tonight. He was not impacted by the family death. He was removed from that family. He was removed from that situation. He should have been here in any ways to represent. I would say that. Also, I wanted to ask town council, is there any legal repercussions that Newport can face with, since the cease and desist was issued with the continued use? I know that they appealed it, so I don't know if there is anything, but would you damage to all of this under any fees or fines or anything because prolonged nine months of them, you know, not voted on a favor?
Yeah. The short answer is no, but when we end up in court, I anticipate moving for an injunction to try to uphold the cease and desist order shortly after the complaint is filed. I can't guarantee the outcome of that, but I will be trying to get a cease and desist issued by the court shortly after litigation starts.
I would like to say that the nine months, which is a bit of a stretch, was spent in a lot of negotiations with the Ledge Road group trying to solve this and they looked at, as I understood, at a lot of options that did not come to fruition, but it wasn't a delay by Ledge Road again and again and again. That just wasn't the case. There were, there were a lot of meetings trying to get a way to make this go away without it being where we are now. The town and, and Ledge Road and Westford, there was, there was a lot of give and take there and it just did not happen. Doesn't mean it can't happen.
Why, why, why are you only going after Newport? There are three businesses up here that contribute to the trucking and you're only picking on Newport?
I, I don't know the answer to that. You can talk to Mr. Niguan who wrote the cease and desist letter, but I think they were the ones found to be in violation.
Well, what's the violation?
They're all oversized trucks on a, on a residential street, so I mean, they're all violating. Every one of them goes up that road.
I think I'm going to respond to the cease and desist letter as it was written.
Thank you.
Because that's what's in front of us. We, we don't have, we have a cease and desist letter for Newport materials. That's what was issued. That was the finding of the building inspector.
It's the size of the trucks that you're, you're.
I, I, you know, and it may be to, and I, I'm not going to assume anything, but it may be the rights of each individual business are separate from one another.
I mean, if you go after one company, you gotta, you gotta, if you're only going to take one company you say you can't go, then the other companies are going to come after you, so, you know, it's.
I, I understand what you're saying. I, I didn't, I didn't pen the letter.
All of them. All of them have to stay off the road.
I, I think you can approach the town and, and talk to them about that and see if they can't work out a way to, to help you with that. But it was issued to Newport materials. That, that was the cease and desist letter. Yes, sir.
Town council, we keep talking about, are we going to Newport? I remember back when the asphalt plant was coming in and Chelmsford objected. We went to court. They said we had no standing. So how does a Western business now have standing over what happens to Chelmsford's own? I don't get it.
We're, we're doing a Ledge Road in Chelmsford, not, not the, the plant can do as it sees fit. What they can't do or have been told to cease and desist is use Ledge Road. That's, that's the exact complaint that we're facing and that is in our purview. It's, it's a, I'm very sympathetic. I've been up there multiple times. I understand what you're seeing, how you're living, and I, I get it. I, I really understand that. We're just trying to give the town its best shot at succeeding at changing the way it is.
My question was, do they have standing?
Yes, they're using Ledge Road. The cease and desist order told them not to. They've appealed that to this board and then depending on the decision issued by the board, a judge reviewing the appeal will need to decide whether or not this board's decision is appropriate.
Why is the town letting them use Ledge Road?
All right. Mr. Chairman, I recommend we proceed to a vote on the request.
I think we're going to put a stop to this before we get ourselves in trouble. To your point, we, we want to leave the town in the best position to respond as they can.
I think it will happen next week on the 18th, right? If, if your board grants us the, to uphold the cease and desist and they appeal it, right? And break, we go to court. Between the time that we go to court in the appeal, are they still able to utilize the road for their business operations or is that put on hold for that situation?
I anticipate they will continue using the road until a court orders them not to.
How long does that take?
I really can't speak to the timing on that, but as I said, I anticipate moving for relief, if and when we do end up in court, I anticipate moving for relief swiftly. Could be Superior Court or Land Court.
And this still creating sides of my street, taking more and more and more of my land so those great big huge trucks could pass.
I've, I've been up there.
I don't feel like getting a gun and standing up. Sorry, guys.
You really should not say that, ma'am. At this point, I think we're gonna, we're gonna stop talking about this and take a vote. So could I get a motion to continue the public hearing?
I'm not doing that.
Okay. Peter, would you like to make a motion?
Go.
I want to ask the lawyer.
Mr. Chairman, the, because of the new hearing that's scheduled for the 18th, it was publicized with being in room 204.
Here, you stand up.
The hearing that's already taking place on the 18th is advertised for room 204 in the town hall, so that's where we'll be meeting for this. It, it would be able to open room 204 and 205 and put video in 205 so that people can see it.
We're trying to get a different venue. This is too small. That's way too small. We've got to try to get a different venue and get the work out. There's a lot of people here.
We, we can't change.
I agree. I agree. It's, it's their capacity. I, I think we'll try to figure that out. It may, maybe that we have our first hearing and relocate. I don't know. We'll, we'll have to figure this out. I'll get, you know, involved with the town and see if we can't find a venue large enough to have this.
We can't, we can't change it.
Well, this has not been advertised.
Yes, but that one on the 18th has that.
But we can go there and then leave if nee-, I don't know what else to tell you. I mean, they're not going to fit in 204, 205. They're not even.
Change of venue.
So.
Can I, can I say something? Nothing? I can't say what they're going to do this morning, please, while, while they're all here.
Go ahead.
Hey, everyone, I know my voice isn't loud enough, so if I may just say one thing, okay? I'm the guy who's been sending you all the emails. I'm bound. Please, please, I know this is frustrating, as you probably gathered because I got short text. But anyway, please, don't give up. We can stop these SOBs, but we've got to stand together and we've got to tell the board what's going on in North Chelmsford and tell them that Newport has taken North Chelmsford from all of us. These are our homes, everybody. Come back for a fight on the 18th. Brian, what was the word? A change of venue?
You should.
You've got plenty of time.
I, I, I believe that's possible, but we're gonna, we're gonna figure that out.
Change of venue?
The issue with changing the venue for that date is because there's a new public hearing scheduled for that date and we need to print at least three weeks in advance where the location, the date, location, time.
Becky, it's not, it's not unprecedented to have that short hearing where you advertised it and then move somewhere else.
Right. That's what I was just asking town council and I was going to share with all of you. So I just asked town council legally if we can reprint for one week without, if we reprint it for one week with the location changed?
For the 40B hearing?
For the 40B hearing.
I would ask the applicant first if they're okay with that. Assuming they are, they.
You just post it. You would just be here, post the second meeting at 7:30, you have another venue. That meeting's posted. Post the second meeting late, half hour later in a different venue. Then you don't have to change anything. It's legal to post anything and then everybody knows where to go for which meeting.
Right.
Work and travel would get two sites. That's the best way.
Yes.
So I will work to coordinate whether this room's available. No. It's not up to me. It's up to when are the rooms available and if telemedia can set it up for us. It's not up to me.
Senior Center. I will call you at the senior center.
It is complicated. The agenda gets posted Friday of the previous week, okay? It could be on the Friday, if not first thing that Monday morning of that week. Actually, no, it would be a Wednesday meeting. It'll be on Friday for certain. Just check on the website. You can call the office as well and check to see if there's any, I will have the confirmation of location, whatever. Mr. Cohen, this day, it will be just in your center, so we'll work to make that happen. Just the confirmation, check the website, the agenda will be posted.
And that Val guy will send it out to everybody.
All right, that being said.
There's one other question. He has a question for town council.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I do it? This work? Hello?
Hold on, hold, hold on.
I have one question for town council. At, is this working?
Yep.
At, at the meeting in January, Jamie, who's a member of the board, who's not here tonight, asked the question of David McKay, who was, is the attorney for the plant. And the question went something like, did you notify the town of something? His response was no, not official of the town, I notified the town attorney. Then she asked a follow-up question, did you notify Westford? And he said, no, I didn't notify Westford. I felt that notifying Chelmsford was enough because they also represent Westford. And you kind of nodded your head. You didn't answer verbally, but you nodded your head that you would pass that information along. Is that correct?
I don't really recall what you referenced, to be honest with you.
Well, it's on YouTube.
Yeah. What I kind of remember, because it's, it's a little.
I think, I think we're just getting way off track.
Yeah, can we, can we go to the vote, Mr. Chairman?
The question is, if he's rep, is KNP represent Westford?
Yes.
All right. So if, if KNP represents Chelmsford and Westford, why weren't, why didn't KNP recuse themselves from this whole thing?
Because that's not necessary, sir.
Why?
Sir, I'm not going to, I'm not going to, no, it's not. I'm not going to answer that right now, though, but it's not.
Well, maybe you can answer it at the next meeting.
I asked the same question last year. Conflict of interest.
Okay, back to the motion at hand.
I'm feeling better. I'd like to make a motion to continue this meeting till, till June 18th, meeting at 7:30 a.m. Yeah, a place to be determined on June 18th at 7:30, 8 o'clock.
Well, is it going to be at the senior center definitively? You should probably say.
Definitely senior center at 8:00 p.m. We can make it to 7:30.
Do 7:30 and we'll get there as quick as we can.
Yeah, we gotta do that first.
Okay, so that's the motion at hand. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Peter. All in favor?
Are you good?
It's unanimous. The meeting will be continued until June 18th at the senior center at 7:30. Thank you all for your patience. I really think we're doing what's best for the town.
Everyone's in the way. It's ridiculous.
I apologize. It was ridiculous. He voted no.
Sorry about that.
Four to one.
He voted no.
Four to one.
It takes two weeks to, I'm going to get it by.
Glad you made the motion. I think you can make the motion still, though. I think that's, I, I actually assumed that you brought the logic of continuing is better.
Hopefully, everybody comes back. Hopefully, everyone comes back. This is great.
Thank you.
That's what we need.
Okay, so these are the ones that are trying to keep it. This is for Brittany. This is our first one. It was on the right. Brittany's the first one?
Yeah.
And then it goes.
Since the cease and desist letter was issued as.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. We agree.
We're, we're very aware of how bad this is. No, we, we've not only are aware of it, but we've been paying attention, you know?
We've all, I think all of us have been up there, right?
Our goal is to remedy that.
Yeah.
And I did not pick.
He's here. He's the one that got the scene. He's gonna make sure the center, yeah. He's.
We're just trying to do what we can do as best we can.
It is ridiculous.
You know, a piece at a time is what I'm on there, you know? One, one piece at a time. Could I ask if you're gonna be involved in the following hearings, uh, take your seats and if not, move along.
Mister Chair, just to clarify, could you please repeat what the result of that motion was and that is one in full notice?
The motion on, on it was four to one. Charles voting not in favor. Okay. Really? I, I don't, I don't know.
They signed an agreement with the plant.
We, we.
A letter of agreement for what they could do and what they couldn't do. And the rule and what that letter said was they cannot turn left. And they cannot, and that they had to drive down.
Yeah.
They, they signed an agreement and the courts approved it.
They, the town, though?
Westford.
With who?
With the land court. That it was a legitimate agreement and they signed it and that's why they have to do what they have to do. And if the plant is made to do something against that agreement, Westford's liable to cancel their permit. Meaning that they cease and desist, period. But that won't happen. Westford will ask for more money to do something else. That's a guess.
So we're gonna go on the next meeting. I appreciate you, Richard. We'll see you on the eighteenth.
I said, and I want to move trees right here, the, the reference is right there.
I understand.
They asked for, they asked for an off-ramp at the state.
You are preaching to the choir, sir.
Our next hearing is six Brittany Lane, owner Eswar Submaranian, requesting a special permit under section one ninety-five nine B conformity for a twenty percent reduction in the front setback requirement to build a farmer's porch and other relief deemed necessary. This property is located in the residential RB district, assessors parcel ID map one eleven, block four twelve, lot thirty-eight and consists of approximately point four seven acres. You should note that in the newspaper, this was published as eight Brittany Lane, but in all the letters to the butters, it was labeled correctly as six Brittany Lane. And I should also state that this was approved, uh, and had expired and the owner is back asking for the same approval as he asked for and the original approval. Someone here to speak for six Brittany Lane? Good evening, sir. Oh, maybe he's, he didn't say it, but, you know. He was running the bathroom? Sir, I'm, I'm just gonna have to ask you to hold on. I think he's gonna take care of that. One of the board members did step out, so we're gonna hold on a second to it and, as a. I mean, reasonably. I think that lady there really has to fuse these explanations. People could understand. Yeah, that's, uh, moving along. I, I think we have five members, so we're gonna just move ahead. I, I assumed he was in the restroom, but I don't know. He's outside? He's out.
I have some minutes to speak, I don't know, you, you all done there, for the record?
Say it once more.
I just wanted to talk about the record. About what we just did, but not testimony or anything?
I'm not, I'm not gonna say that's a good idea. I don't know where you're going with it. I'll just do it as best we can. Good evening.
Good evening, Chair. As you are aware, twenty twenty, we had gotten the approval for the farmer's porch that we intended to put in, which we could not finish. And we plan on doing it hopefully this year and hence requesting if the same permit could be granted again for us if we decide to get it done this year, so.
Yes, yes. Okay, so, uh, we previously approved this as a board, not, not everyone here did. We got the plot plan we can pull up, Becky?
Yep.
Oh, there we go. How could I miss it? We'll be adding a thirty-six by six-foot farmer's porch off the front of it, bringing our front setback to thirty-eight, seven and thirty-nine, three. And the setback is forty, is that correct? Yeah, so that's why we're, we're literally inches away from succeeding. I'm gonna read the record, I'm gonna read the letters into the record. Here, the project engineer Sheila Joyce. This office has reviewed the property application documents submitted to the DPW on May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five for the following public hearing notice, June fifth, twenty twenty-five. Six Brittany Lane is requesting a special permit. There'll be no increase to the town sewer's infrastructure. The proposal, the porch and addition must be near or possibly over the existing sewer service. Care should be taken when setting footings excavation for foundation. The sewer needs to be moved, a licensed contractor through the DPW is required for both sewer and trench permits. Erosion control devices must retain the sediment on site. These must be installed prior to any work or demolition. Should be noticed that the property is located within the wetland buffer zone and the conservation commission should be coordinated with as necessary. Four, consideration should be made to install roof drain drywells or the equivalent infiltrate of roof runoff. This is not a requirement for approval. That's the Public Works. I have a letter from, uh, Jose Negron, the building commissioner. A special permit is required for a twenty percent frontage reduction from the Board of Appeals under one ninety-five nine. Conformity required the reduction of the dimensional requirements. You can appeal my denial within thirty days of this date, of this notice to the community development department to be heard at the Board of Appeals. And this is another letter from Mister Negron. That's the extent of my letters. Any questions of the board? Seeing none, I'm gonna open this up for public comment. Seeing none.
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing for six Brittany Lane, or eight Brittany Lane, sorry.
No.
Six, six is correct.
Six Brittany Lane.
Okay, sorry. It's six Brittany Lane.
I have a second on that? Second by Peter? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous? Opposed? Seeing none? Motion is approved.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
That was the closing, we had approved.
Oh, that was the closing, I'm sorry, yeah.
I make a motion that we approve the special permit.
Going too fast.
Under section one ninety-five dash nine subsection B for conformity for a twenty percent reduction for the front setback for the farmer's porch.
Well, second it.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now it is approved. Okay, our next public hearing is fifteen Castlewood Drive. The owner is Larry M. Wolfram. He's requesting a special permit under section one ninety-five nine B conformity for a twenty percent reduction in the front and side setback requirements to build a new attached garage addition and other relief deemed necessary. This property is located in the residential RB district. Someone here to speak this evening?
Good evening.
Good evening, sir. If I could just get your name and address?
Uh, my name's Larry Wolfram. I live at sixteen Castlewood Drive in North Chelmsford. And I'm also the, the applicant for the special permit.
Perfect.
Okay.
If you wanna just give us an overview, Larry, that would be great.
Okay, um, so this project is based on the fact that my wife and I moved here uh, back in Mar, a year ago in March from Illinois to be closer to family. And we didn't know much about Chelmsford, but then last year we've really kinda fallen in love with the place. And we intend to stick around for a while and age in place in the house that we purchased there. And, uh, one of the things that happened this past winter, when one of our snowstorm's wife, you know, had a mishap, injured her knee and she was, um, limited mobility for a while. And we learned that with our house and all, pretty much all the houses in that neighborhood, the laundry facilities are in the basement. And with her limited mobility and I came in to help out, uh, you know, realized that, uh, that may be a little bit of a detriment for our plans to age in place for as long as we can at that house. So, uh, we started looking at options of what we might do to mitigate those challenges. And we came up with a plan to create a laundry room on the main floor of our ranch house so we don't have to, you know, carry things up and down basement stairs for that purpose. So, uh, here's our plot plan. Do you wanna, Becky, you wanna get into details of the floor plan?
That, that should be, that, there and then.
Okay, did, did you have any questions on the plot plan? I'm sorry.
No. Well, there is the plot plan.
Yeah.
Okay. So many, this is a, the sketch shows, uh, pretty much, uh, what, what we're planning and changing for the property itself. The, the black, uh, the details in black are the existing, uh, design of the house. The previous owners built a second bathroom to the house and this is in the upper left-hand corner of the drawing. And so they took a six by ten-foot space in that corner of the garage, built the bathroom. The garage is still functional for our purposes in terms of getting two cars in there. And, uh, our plans for, uh, adding the laundry room, because the bathroom was right there, is take the back part of the garage, similar to what was done with the bathroom, build the laundry room there, uh, the lineup of the appliances and the laundry tub, uh, kind of, uh, are, are close to a hookup for the existing plumbing that's already in place. The one thing to gi, in this layout here, the main part of the house is to the left in this drawing. So to gain access to the laundry room, we would have to construct a, a short hallway outside of the bathroom there to get to that. Okay? The net effect of that is it's, it's gonna take what was the back wall of the garage and move it towards the garage door by approximately twelve feet. Okay? And this layout was kind of inspired by a previous house that we owned back in Illinois there, so. So that layout worked out pretty well. And if you kinda scroll to the bottom part, Becky, please? So basically, what, in order to regain the space that we need to park two vehicles in the twenty-four-foot square garage, we're also proposing doing in addition to the front of the garage to add twelve feet to the front of that. And, uh, so we can go to the plot plan again.
So the actual addition is in the front of the house, the, the work you'll be doing for the washing machine is in the back. You'll be stealing that space and just moving it forward?
Exactly.
Okay.
So if I wanna zoom in on the red portion of the drawing there. Okay, so this shows where we are gonna be pushing the front of the garage out by approximately twelve feet. The current setback of the front of that garage is forty feet from the, the front lot line. The requirement is thirty-five feet. We're asking for a twenty percent, uh, reduction of, of the setback requirement to get the additional seven feet to give us the twelve feet that we need for the front. Additionally, if you notice, uh, the, the top or the north lot line of our property is not exactly perpendicular to the, the front lot line along, uh, Castlewood Drive. It's about an eight-degree tilt on that. So as you come forward with the garage, what is now a seven-point-nine-foot setback requirement there is seventeen feet. It would become a sixteen-point-two-foot setback from the north, uh, lot line at, at that point. So our quest for a special permit is to, uh, you know, get, get allowance to do, to go out to twelve feet to the, towards the street and, uh, have a, a setback from the side of sixteen-point-two feet.
Thank you.
And the, you know, again, the motivation for this is our wanting to be, uh, you know, a, a, to age in place, you know?
Oh, I understand. I think it's a great idea. Honestly, I think it's, it's great.
So that's my presentation.
Thank you.
It's a good one.
Any questions?
This is more than twenty percent. I thought the set, front setback was four.
I think we have a stamp here.
The twenty percent, oh, I'm sorry.
Phil, my Mr. Chairman, the front setback for the house is thirty-five feet.
Thirty-five, okay, okay. Thirty-five, that makes it.
Right, so they were thirty-four, seven, now they're twenty-eight, which is seven feet. Twenty percent of the thirty-five.
I'm good.
Okay, seven feet, three point five times two.
Yep, I got it.
Any further questions of the board? Seeing none, I'm gonna open this up to, oh, you don't wanna read the letters first, that's a better idea. From the Board of Health, there are no concerns. Chelmsford Water District has no concerns. The Fire Department. Dear Members of the Board, regarding the special permit request for sixteen Castlewood Drive, this office finds the following. Per seven eighty CMR fifty-one, a heat detector shall be placed in the new garage that is hardwired and interconnected to one device that is within twenty feet of the nearest door to the garage. This is the minimum protection required. However, we recommend upgrading the whole home to a hardwired interconnected system with smoke, carbon monoxide detection throughout. Plans are to be reviewed by this office as part of the building permit process to ensure compliance. This office would approve of these plans with these conditions. I ask that you make this letter part of the public record and your approval process. Sincerely, Josh Abbott, Captain, Fire Prevention Office. I have a letter from Sheila Joyce, Town Engineer, sixteen Castlewood. As a result of the review, this office has the following comments. Erosion control devices must retain the sediment on site. These must be installed prior to any work or demolition. Consideration should be made to install roof drain drywells or the equivalent to infiltrate the roof. This is not a requirement for approval. It should be noted the property is located within the Aqua Fire Protection Zone Two and the Conservation Commission should be coordinated with as necessary. Three, record sewer, record, record sewer does not show any conflict with the proposed structure. Not sure that's verded, right, but that's what I got. And, uh, last one is the police who have no concerns. I do have another letter, which is a letter of a neighbor or in a butter.
Eighteen.
Eighteen Castlewood. Becky, as discussed during my visits to town offices today, I've been assigned by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as a personal representative for the estate of Mary B. Maras. Attached letter of authority if needed. This responsible includes authority for the property at eighteen Castlewood Drive. I reviewed the special permit proposals from Larry Wolfram at sixteen Castlewood Drive and I.
But where are the minutes? Good to see you, bud.
That's right, good to see you, sir. I remember, I remember.
Remember that?
Is it still doing good, the park? No problems. See? Hey?
That's good. Hello.
Thank you so much for that.
Good evening.
I can just see what the minutes were here.
If you guys didn't read them, I read the minutes for June, yeah, June eighteenth. No, it wasn't June eighteenth. May, where is it? Oh, May eighth. Yeah, I was looking at the wrong time.
I wasn't here, so I can't, right?
I, I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes as written for May eighth, two thousand twenty-five.
Got a second by Glenn? Oh, sorry, dude, he was looking the other way. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Four. Now can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Opposed?
Yeah.
It's your pen, I think.